Welcome to the Tuesday, November 10, 2020 Long Term Infrastructure Investment Workshop Meeting. Due to COVID-19 and in accordance with Alameda County Health Orders and the Governor's Executive Order N 2920, which suspends portions of the Brown Act, this meeting will be conducted remotely. In compliance with those orders, a physical location has not been provided for this meeting. These measures will only apply during the period in which state or local public health officials have imposed or recommended social distancing. Today, staff will provide an update on the district's current and planned activities to maintain and improve the district's infrastructure in support of providing safe, high-quality water and wastewater services now and in the future, while highlighting efforts on sustainability, resilience, effective maintenance, and climate change. Directors this morning, including myself, will be participating via Zoom. Director Coleman, I mean Director Patterson is excused. And if you would do the roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Directors Coleman.
President.
Katz.
President.
Lenny.
Here.
McIntosh.
Here.
Mellon.
President.
President Young.
I am here. And Director Patterson will be excused for all of today's meetings. If members of the public wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, please use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom to indicate your interest in speaking. Comments on non-agenda items will be heard at the beginning of the meeting. Comments on the workshop will be held at the end of the presentation. When prompted, please state your name, affiliation, if applicable, and the topic. The secretary will call speakers in the order received, and each speaker will be given three minutes to speak. Though I may, at my discretion, amend that time based on the number of speakers. The secretary will keep track of speakers' time and inform each speaker when their allotted time has concluded. We will now kick this off. Well, actually, are there any public speakers? Secretary?
There is no public comment.
Okay. Then we will turn it over to Clifford.
Excuse me, President Young. We just got one public commenter.
Okay.
Yeah, we have Eric Larson, and so we're going to go ahead and allow Eric to speak. Eric, can you hear me? Eric, you have to unmute yourself.
Unmute.
All right. So I'm gonna go.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are unmuted.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and start your time. You'll have three minutes, starting now.
Thank you, Risha. Good morning, Board of Directors and General Manager and Directors of Wastewater and Water Operations and Maintenance. I did want to provide a brief comment specifically concerning the wastewater long-term infrastructure planning and offer, I commend Director White in her effort to provide a holistic plan for long-term infrastructure investment. I think that from what I've seen of the plan so far, it's very thorough and complete. I do recommend that the best thing for the dewatering building is Dynamite. That is a horrible facility to have to work in. It needs to be completely demolished and rebuilt. And in that light, there are many capital projects that have been undertaken at the wastewater treatment plant at SV1. Sledge thickening, for instance, is a monolith, a multimillion-dollar monolith that is completely New flares have been millions of dollars, and they're still trying to work out the kinks. It appears that the turbine may not be cost economical, and $41 million for the turbine generator may be more money spent on infrastructure projects than were worthwhile. And I hope that part of the wastewater improvement master plan includes an evaluation of why some of these past projects have ended in failures and don't work. Nonetheless, I think that the wastewater master plan does provide a fairly holistic view, and I appreciate the work that has gone into that, and I encourage the district to continue to look at these projects in a very holistic manner so that we don't spend money on projects that don't come to fruition as envisioned. Thank you for your time this morning, and I look forward to hearing the report of the full investment, infrastructure investment workshop. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments or for items that are not part of the agenda? Clifford, let's proceed.
Good morning. So as you've mentioned, today, we're going to present our Long Term Infrastructure Investment Workshop. We've been doing these workshops, actually, since 2018 to update you and get feedback on our plans to address our infrastructure needs. And the information presented also provides background as we prepare fiscal year '22 and '23 budget with the first budget workshop in January. Similar to past years, we're going to cover our water and wastewater infrastructure, but this year, the focus is on the wastewater system. Just procedurally, just ask questions as we go along through the presentation. We have a number of presenters today, and Eileen White, the Director of Wastewater, will begin the workshop.
Great. Thank you, Clifford. Well, good morning, President Young and members of the board. We're really excited to be here at the infrastructure workshop today. For the past several months, I've been mentioning the master plan, and now we're finally gonna unveil our roadmap for the future. And I want to say that the wastewater team truly exhibited the district's values of stewardship, integrity, respect, and teamwork in conducting the condition assessments and working collaboratively together to develop the master plan. And as Clifford mentioned, at last year's infrastructure workshop, we focused the majority of our time on the water system, and I gave a very short presentation on the master plan to really whet your appetites. This year, we're gonna switch roles. We're gonna focus primarily on the wastewater master plan, then we're gonna have a very brief break before switching to the water system update by Jimmy and his team. As we all know, the water system has many master plans, such as a Water Supply Management Plan 2040, the Pumping Plant Master Plan, the Reservoir Master Plan, and many others that have been guiding the district's infrastructure for many years. But for the wastewater department, they've created very silo plans over the years. And so today's presentation, we want to present the Integrated Main Wastewater Treatment Plant Master Plan. But because we have a limited amount of time, we're not gonna go through all 80 buildings at the plant or every pump and every motor. What we've done is we've picked some strategic topics, such as resource recovery, nutrients, biosolids, aging infrastructure, and climate change that we'll be discussing. And then we're gonna conclude the wastewater portion of the master plan by synthesizing the roadmap. And I started, I showed this graphic at the virtual tour, and before, we were focused on the challenges, whereas today, we're gonna be switching gears and we're gonna be talking about solutions. But before we get started, I'd like to follow up on some questions from the virtual tour. Director Mellon asked about can other metal alloys, such as those used at paper mills, be used in the wastewater treatment? We appreciated the question, and we researched it and discovered that paper mill processes have a much lower pH than wastewater, so different metal alloys are used. However, the new stainless steel screw conveyors that we're using, which are 316 stainless steel, is industry-recommended material for wastewater and is very resistant to corrosion. And then another question we had was what improvements have been made to concrete, such as high-strength concrete, that might be more durable in wastewater treatment? And that was another excellent question that we investigated, and we found out that high-strength concrete is used to enhance the load-bearing capacity, but not to prevent corrosion. So concrete that comes into contact with wastewater, whether it's high strength or not, is susceptible to corrosion and cracking, but it's mitigated by the coatings and high-performance resurfacing mortars that have developed over the years. And then we had a question about outreach, and what are we doing with regard to wipes and getting our message out on wipes? And we've been working with a number of industry associations to prohibit calling wipes flushable on package labels. Recently, Assembly Bill 1672 tried to change this law, but was not successful, but we're gonna make another attempt at that. In addition, we spread our pollution prevention messaging through billboard ads, bus stop ads, and on social media. And then this year, we worked with the City of Alameda to provide our wipe ads for their use on city vehicles, and we continue to share the message through our virtual tour. And then we had a question about our pharmaceuticals, and you know, can we provide more information on our pharmaceuticals? And on the left is a map of the pharmaceutical disposal bins across our service area. The best approach for pharmaceuticals is really preventing them from getting into the wastewater in the first place, since these contaminants really can't be fully removed from traditional wastewater treatment. In addition, we fund the San Francisco Estuary Institute to perform its regional monitoring program of San Francisco Bay, and they research a range of issues concerning the bay water quality, including contaminants of emerging concern like pharmaceuticals. And then we had a question about our wastewater rates and how are Oreloma's rates so low? So you probably recognize this graphic. It shows the wastewater rates from the various wastewater agencies in the Bay Area. And kind of to summarize, it's kind of complicated to directly compare two agencies on their rates, but we did want to respond to the question. And the next graphic is actually taken from the Oreloma website. They like to brag about their rates, but there's a number of reasons why their rates are so much lower, and it includes they have a much younger collection system, their treatment plan is much newer and in better shape, they have more land for cheaper biosolids management, they can lay out their biosolids and let them dry to 90% before hauling them away. We don't have that luxury. We don't have the space at our plant, so we haul away our biosolids when they're much wetter and only 25% dry, which makes it much more expensive. Also, over the last 20 years, they reduced their staffing by 30%. They also have a partnership with Castro Valley Sanitation District, and they pay roughly 25% of all their operating and maintenance costs, because they represent about 25% of the flow. And then they.
But Eileen, Castro Valley Sam is so much higher than Oreloma, even though they own a portion of that plant, and I still can't figure out how they do it.
Yeah, and apparently Castro Valley pays 25% of the actual own M cost of Oreloma, but I followed up with your GM, and he says, when they have capital projects, they decide what's the benefit and value to Castro Valley. So then they get to decide, working with Castro Valley, what percent? So I think for some of their capital improvements that Oreloma's done, I think Castro Valley's probably paid more than their fair share. So in summary, it's very clear to compare rates, and there's a number of reasons why Oreloma's so much lower. And then there were several other additional questions about the Resource Recovery Program, biosolids, and sea level rise, which we're gonna answer throughout the rest of this presentation. So stay tuned. And then as we look back on this year, we have to realize that we faced many challenges, and the district did a great job adjusting to telecommuting, working in the field with masks and social distancing, treating the waste from the Grand Princess cruise ship, and then dealing with these unprecedented wildfire season. But we're also proud of the way the district staff has turned these challenges into opportunities. The lab began making hand sanitizers, as well as disinfectant and 95 masks. Staff continue to perform their jobs in the field with their masks and their social distancing. And then lastly, we work collaboratively to monitor the coronavirus and the wastewater Well, at the virtual tour, I emphasize that the wastewater industry is rapidly changing. In particular, I focus on some of the drivers, such as our aging infrastructure, as Eric so nicely described, and I don't disagree with any of his comments about our aging infrastructure, our seismic vulnerabilities, climate change, new regulations, and capacity. And this was really the driver for looking at holistic view at the main wastewater treatment plant. We also know there's many uncertainties regarding our drivers, so we needed the master plan to strategically plan the roadmap for the future. What has made the master plan so unique and complex is that it's a holistic evaluation of the many components, both individually and collectively. We describe the master plan as integrated, because we've examined how these components all fit into the big picture. So when we make our investments in our infrastructure, they're no regrets investments, and they're looking at nutrients, they're looking at climate change, they're looking at the aging infrastructure and how to best optimize the R2 program. And then in order to have a roadmap, you have to have a destination. In our case, the destination was our guiding principles, which can be visualized by this Venn diagram containing the categories of financial, environmental, social, and technical. The guiding principles were like our North Star throughout the past year as we prepared this master plan. And then we broke the guiding principles into particular components that we could use for the holistic analysis. Of course, we want to know the financial impact, but we also want to know things about resiliency and sustainability. What's the ease of operations and maintenance? We want our own staff to be able to operate the facility. We want them to be able to maintain our investments in our infrastructure. We want the flexibility to meet increasingly more stringent regulations. And then, of course, we want to be mindful of the community impact. We want to be a good neighbor to our West Oakland neighbors. And then decision-making throughout the master plan was holistic, and it considered all these guiding principles. And we'll be covering many topics today, but first, we'll talk about these items individually. Then at the end, we're gonna synthesize the roadmap and then conclude with our next steps. And now that I've kind of provided you the background, I'd like to introduce our speakers. Since we like to view the main wastewater treatment plant as a resource recovery, to keep in line with our goal to recycle and reuse, today, we are recycling the three speakers from the virtual tour, as you can see in the top row. So in addition, the bottom row shows our new speakers. So in the top row, Matt Heft is a supervisor of wastewater planning, and he's played an integral role in managing our CIP and overseeing the master plan. Yun Chang is our new manager of lab and technical services, but before being recently promoted, she was leading the master plan and playing a key role in working with our bay stakeholders on nutrient studies. James Hank is one of our very talented engineers, who has a central role in the master plan and our virtual tours. And then Alicia Chakabarti is the manager of wastewater environmental services and oversees the Resource Recovery Program. And Rebecca Overacre is an engineer with an extensive background in asset management and biosolids management. She led the condition assessment with our team of O&amp;M staff and engineers to evaluate nearly 1,000 major pieces of equipment at the main wastewater treatment plant. And she's also the district's expert on biosolids. So without further ado, I'd like to pass it on to Alicia Chakabarti, who will talk about our Resource Recovery Program. And before I do that, I want to pause and ask if you have any questions. Okay, if not, Alicia?
Okay, thanks very much, Eileen. So I'm gonna start by providing a little bit of context on the capital investments that we've made in the Resource Recovery Program over the last 20 years. In 2002, we installed the first low-strength waste receiving station, so this is to take material in at the front end of the plant. Two years later, we installed a solid liquid receiving station. This is for high-strength waste, so this takes material directly into the digesters for digestion and increase biogas production. As a result of that increased biogas production, we then expanded the power generation station in 2012 with that large capital investment of installing a new turbine. Most recently, we installed a high-strength waste receiving station, this is the second one, and this one's just outside of our fence line, so it keeps the trucks off our side. And so we're mindful of all of these existing investments and how to make the best use of these assets as we move forward. Now, the R2 program is certainly something that East Bay Mudd is known for and is a key part of wastewater department operations, and accordingly, was a really critical component of the master plan analysis. And there are various pros and cons to the R2 program. It does bring in significant revenue in the form of tip fees, but there's also significant capital costs as well as O&amp;M costs. We've increased our renewable energy production greatly, gone from meeting about 40% of our plant demand to over about 130% currently. But with that comes additional nutrients and biosolids to manage. We see the R2 program as having global holistic environmental benefit. We're taking materials that might otherwise go to landfill and result in uncontrolled methane releases and digesting them. However, within the boundary of our treatment plant, we see increased greenhouse gas emissions associated with those wastes. And the increased biogas also results in some challenges for our air permit. So as part of the master plan, we really took a very careful and critical look at how the R2 program impacts our operations, our infrastructure needs, and regulatory compliance, because it does interface in all of those. And the key thing is that really, conditions have changed. A lot has changed since 2002, when the R2 program started. And I'm gonna talk about the ways in which conditions have changed in three categories. So first, energy prices have changed significantly. Second, nutrients. This is something that is an emerging regulatory concern, which was not something that we thought much about 20 years ago. And then lastly, greenhouse gas emissions. And this is something that just in the last couple years, in the way that we're looking at quantifying greenhouse gas emissions for the treatment plant, it's become a significant consideration. So over the next few slides, I'm gonna walk you through how each of these components and the change conditions were taken into account in the master plan, and then our recommended approach for the near term, which we're referring to as a right-sized R2 program. So first, on changing economics of electricity. Few things are happening here. Our costs to produce have gone up. That was somewhat expected. We added the turbine. That added the need for gas conditioning. It also ultimately added the need for a fairly expensive service agreement, which is currently 3/4 of a million dollars a year. And then we just have generally aging equipment in the power generation station. What we didn't expect was this decreased value of renewable electricity. At the time that we were planning the power generation station expansion, we were looking at increasing electricity value and especially the renewable energy credits. What we actually saw was a reduction in value due to the influx of inexpensive solar and wind. Because of this, these two factors, we're at a point where producing power to sell does not make sense economically, and that's one of the reasons that Eileen came to you earlier this year and revised our key performance indicator from meeting 130% of plant demand to matching 100% of our plant electricity demand. And now I'd like to turn to a question, which is related to this topic, which was asked at the Sustainability Committee meeting on October 27. Director Mellon asked the question of whether it's profitable for us to generate rather than purchase electricity from the grid. And this graph walks through the answer to that. So the shaded areas are the value that we get for electricity production. The blue is the avoided power purchases, and then the green is the value of power sales. And now on top of that, you'll see the red line is the total operating cost, so where that operating cost fall below the shaded area, that's where we want to be. What you see is in recent years, those have actually diverged, so the value that we get is actually less than the cost to operate. So in answer to your question, Director Mellon, purely looking at the power generation station and this analysis, no, it is not cost-effective. There's other considerations, of course. There are tipping fees that we get for high-strength waste, and then there are non-financial benefits of producing clean renewable energy on site. But we're looking very carefully at these changing conditions, and we have a couple of upcoming triggers. Those are the end of the port sales agreement, which is in 2022, and then a year later, the end of the service agreement for the turbine ends in 2023. So we'll be continuing to further evaluate the economics in light of the change conditions ahead of these two triggers. Now, the second area in which things have changed is nutrients, and you've seen this graph before, showing that a not insignificant portion of the nutrients that we discharge in our wastewater are from the Resource Recovery Program. And considering effluent nitrogen is obviously a significant change since the R2 program began, and it's something which Yun will be talking about further in the section on Related to nutrients, that very same nitrogen also has an impact on our greenhouse gas emissions. And this is significant, because of all of wastewater's greenhouse gas emissions, the largest fraction is what we produce onsite in treatment and discharge emissions under the new Water Energy Nexus Protocol. And that same 20% of nitrogen that comes from the R2 program that I just talked about in our effluent also means that about 20% of our process emissions are due to the Resource Recovery Program. And that's important for two reasons. One is that we have a baseline greenhouse gas emissions that we're comparing against. That baseline year is the year 2000, which of course was before we accepted any R2 wastes. So while we have adjusted our baseline based on the new protocol, because we weren't receiving any R2 waste, that part doesn't change. And then the second reason that it's important is because all of this material comes in through a truck, and unlike what gets flushed down the drains, we can control it. Now, when we talk about R2 waste streams, we're talking about a broad portfolio of different wastes that have different impacts. And so on a scale of nitrogen, you can see here, we've laid them out from very low nitrogen, the brines that we receive at the front end of the plant and directly into the effluent channel, all the way through to food waste, and then to blood waste, which is very high in protein and therefore high in nitrogen. And so looking at our different portfolio in this way, what we can do is identify the high-nitrogen wastes and strategically reduce those, which we believe will result in about a 15% to 20% reduction in our nitrogen. And this is what we're talking about when we talk about a right-sized R2 program. Next slide. So the right-sized R2 program will reduce our nutrient loading. It will also reduce our biosolids. It will reduce our biogas and our greenhouse gas emission. And this next slide is one that you will see in the rest of the presentation, which lays out different drivers in the master plan, and then how the recommended approach is considered in relation to those drivers. And what you see here is that for all five of these drivers, there's a positive benefit for the recommended approach of a right-sized R2 program. And now I just want to take a minute to talk about food waste and answer a question that Director Katz asked at the virtual tour in October. and answer a question that Director Katz asked at the virtual tour in October. And that question was whether we could implement dedicated digestion to reduce biosolids management costs, which is an excellent question. It's something we have considered and wanted to do for many years. The answer, though, today is that currently, one, we don't have sufficient food, solid food waste to dedicate an entire digester. So it could be a mix of food waste and other high-strength waste. It would require a significant capital investment in dedicated piping, but moreover, in the dedicated dewatering facility. We estimate that at over $10 million. And through the master plan, we've done additional market analyses, and we have not identified a new market for this biosolids-free product that would in any way justify the high costs. So with that, if I'd be happy to take any questions. If not, I will pass it to Yun to talk about nutrients.
Okay, so thank you, Alicia. I'll walk you through our nutrients roadmap. Seven million people living in the Bay Area are serviced by certain seven POTWs that discharge treated wastewater into the bay as shown by the map on the left. On the right is a pie chart showing nitrogen sources to the central bay where our main wastewater treatment plant discharges to. Over 90% of the nutrient input is from wastewater, and 20% of nitrogen comes from East Bay MUD. That's more than any other POTW in the Bay Area. Bay stakeholders are investigating whether the bay is impacted by nitrogen. A nutrient discharge load cap is currently under consideration by the regulators and would likely appear in the next five-year watershed permit to be renewed in 2024. We are working with the regulators and the other Bay stakeholders to define the load cap. As mentioned earlier, the science is still ongoing to investigate the impact of nutrients on the bay. However, in the meantime, the regulators and the wastewater agencies have identified three different nutrient targets for planning purposes: Low the Cap, Level 2, and Level 3. Each of the planning level targets requires increasing level of treatment, and each can be a standalone endpoint pending on regulatory decisions. In our ongoing dialogue with the regulators, they have indicated if we had to implement full nutrient treatment, then it would likely be Level 2 as the endpoint. However, since our master plan is comprehensive, we have examined the footprint need to meet Level 3 requirement. A number of Bay Area wastewater agencies are committed to meaningful nutrient reduction as early actors. The district has been recognized by the regulators for conducting this significant master planning effort and for proactively testing various treatment technologies. We know that we have to reduce nutrients in our treated wastewater. So how are we going to do it? There are three ways to reduce nutrients: Right sizing R2, side stream treatment, and mainstream treatment. This schematic shows where in the treatment process the nutrient reduction occurs. The first option is right sizing R2, which involves reducing nutrient-rich trucked waste deliveries, as Alicia has explained. The second option is side stream treatment. Side stream generated from watering carries large amount of nutrients in a small flow. By treating it directly, we will remove nutrient innate, which is currently being cycled within the plant. We have tested a number of promising cost-effective technologies and led a regional side stream study using an EPA grant earlier. The third option is mainstream treatment, which occurs in secondary biological process. It's referred to as mainstream because it refers to the full volume of wastewater. Evaluating the three nutrient reduction strategies was a significant component to the master plan, as you can see from the numbers on the right. First, we screened the technologies for fatal flaws, like can the technology even fit into the existing footprint of the main plant? We looked also both nutrient removal and the recovery options. Then we performed a detailed analysis, which examined how the technology aligned with the guiding principles, as Eileen explained earlier. Lastly, we selected the technologies for planning purpose. Here is a graph showing the capital cost of various nutrient reduction strategies. Right sizing R2 does not have any capital cost. However, we would lose a small amount of revenue. A brand-new side stream treatment would cost $100 million. And then partial mainstream treatment would cost $400 million. Bipartial, which really means about 25% of the wastewater flow, would undergo this extra treatment. The full Level 2 mainstream treatment would cost significantly high at $1.3 billion. For this option, 100% of the flow would undergo this extra treatment. Here is our first roadmap slide. We start out at the top left and make our way right and then down. The different milestones are shown with the gray circles. As shown by the legend at the bottom left, the triggers are represented by red diamonds, and the potential endpoints are represented by blue flags. In the near term, we reach our first regulatory trigger, the low the cap. To reach, to reduce nutrients, we will right-size R2 to reduce the high nitrogen waste streams. In addition, we will continue to evaluate and test innovative, low-cost solutions to leverage our existing infrastructure. If we reached a regulatory trigger requiring additional nutrient reductions, then we will do side stream treatment. This could be a potential endpoint. If it's still not enough and we reached another regulatory trigger, we would go to mainstream treatment, which I will show you in a moment. The key takeaways from our roadmap are we are taking actions to reduce nutrients in the near term before side stream treatment. And all the nutrient management solutions can be synergistically integrated for no regrets investments. Let me illustrate the roadmap in a different ways using numbers, where engineers, we like numbers. So shown here is a graph of projected nitrogen load in pounds per day from 2020 through 2050. The black line shows the status quo, that is, if we continue to have population and R2 growth, but do not implement any nutrient reduction strategies. The horizontal line shows the potential load cap. As you can see, we are already very close to it. When we right-size R2, we will see a decrease from status quo. Following that, the load continues to grow gradually due to population growth. In early 2030, we implement side stream treatment, which then causes another job. The cycle repeats and the load grows back gradually. At some point, we may need to implement partial mainstream treatment to drop the load again to stay below the potential load cap. Here is an area map of the main wastewater treatment plant. The light green square indicates the land required for a brand-new side stream treatment system. If Level 2 mainstream treatment is ever required, then major upgrades will be needed, as shown in the media green. The dark green shows the additional sites needed to go from Level 2 to Level 3 treatment. So as you can see, mainstream treatment kicks up a significant portion of our site, thereby explaining why it's so costly. The site layout shown here represents using established technologies to be conservative. Moving forward, the district will continue tracking technology advancements. So that's our roadmap to the nutrients. If no questions, I'll invite James to talk about dewatering.
This is John Coleman. I do have a couple of questions. Good presentation, thank you. If we can go back to slide 40 on the cost, that would be greatly appreciated. I know that... I think it's 40. Going back myself here. Yeah, it is. Maybe it's... I guess my PowerPoint is 40. Yes. So the options are from no cost to $1.3 billion. Why, we'd like to know what the regulatory drivers are on nutrient loading, what the regional water board is looking at, what US EPA may be looking at in terms of what may force us to go one direction or not. And then, so that we need, I'd like to know what the regulatory drivers will be, because that may dictate what our costs are going to be, that we need to associate. And do we know what grants are out there, whether it be from the feds or states that could help offset some of these costs? And then the side stream system, what we're talking about potentially on slide 44, is that going to increase the potential smell to the neighbors when having concerns about doing that on-site? So I have several questions, if I need to repeat them, I can.
Okay. So I'm going to go with the last one for the side stream treatment. So the technology we tested was a very creative biological ammonia removal, which converts ammonia into nitrogen gas. And with all the full-scale installation to our knowledge, it actually improves the order, not making the order worse. Okay. Then your other question about the regulatory driver, about the nutrient removal. So currently, the whole region, including the water board, including wastewater agencies and NGOs, and also the regional science institute, SFEI, we're all working together and looking at the science. How is the nutrient impacts of the bay? And also trying to develop the best nutrient reduction strategies for the region. So it's still an ongoing process, and this collaborative approach has won the NAPA award, and we'll all be very proud to be part of it. So this is ongoing. Yeah, and also we do see the potential needs for the different grants, and we are checking on the potential opportunities down the road.
Okay, thank you for answering. I know that Eileen has done a great job at SFEI arguing the case for PTOs on nutrient loading. I just can't imagine, because I'm involved with SFEI with the activities I do and get a lot of the same papers, that they're not going to be putting greater pressure on to reduce the nutrient load in the bay. And so we can't assume that there's not going to be any regulatory changes, one. And two, I would hope that we're working now with potentially, well, not potentially, with an administration, that we could actually tap into more funding to be able to do what we need to do. Could be great to do the full level, but there's no way we can pay for that. The right payers can't shoulder that burden by any means. And so we may be stuck doing side stream or partial. Just trying to look ahead from that perspective.
And thank you, Director Coleman. And I'll just add, I represent BACWA on the Nutrient Management Strategy Team, so on a regular basis with SFEI, with the regional board, their Assistant Executive Officer, EPA, so at the highest levels. And so they're here in the POTW perspective. And I have also shared with them, you know, we have aging infrastructure. We have other competing priorities. We do recognize that San Francisco Bay is a nutrient-rich estuary. They've been very clear that in all likelihood, the next watershed permit, like you described in 2024, will have load caps. But by right sizing R2, we won't have to spend any capital. That gives us time to buy time to let the technology for side stream to emerge and become more sophisticated and less costly. And all likelihood, we will have to go to side stream at some point, but we're very engaged. It's like one of my top priorities is nutrients and the consent decree, because it's the largest financial liability for the district in SD1 is the nutrients. And the goal is hopefully we never have to go to Level 3, that hopefully with right sizing R2 and side stream, if nothing else, we would buy decades and let the science, you know, dictate further regulations.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. So if there are no further questions on Yun's section, then I'm the next speaker. My name's James. And so I'm going to be talking all about rehabilitating aging infrastructure, but in particular, I'm going to focus on dewatering. So as Eileen mentioned, we have a limited amount of time today. So we strategically picked topics that would be the most important to summarize our master plan, as well as ones that are interested the board or the public. And so dewatering, as you heard from Eric Larson, is definitely one topic that staff are concerned about. So you'll remember from the virtual tour that aging infrastructure, it's a really important driver for us. We have many different types of infrastructure, and they were all installed at different periods of time, as you can see from this slide. And so the reason why I'm talking about dewatering in particular is because, as I'll explain in a moment, we have two options in the future. And both of those options are very expensive, on the order of $100 million. Meanwhile, all of the other aging infrastructure that you heard about at the virtual tour will be addressed through our Capital Improvement Program, which Eileen will discuss toward the end of the presentation. So stay tuned on that front. To give everyone a quick refresher on dewatering, the solids treatment process has several steps, as you can see here. And dewatering is highlighted with that blue box. And that's the step that removes water from the digested sledge, which produces the nutrient-rich biosolids. And so you can think of dewatering as a salad spinner, where the water is removed by rotating really fast in a circular motion. And dewatering is really a dirty business. Our equipment experience is daily wear and tear. That makes it prone to failure. And the way that the system is resigned isn't resilient. So whenever one piece of equipment goes down, the entire train of equipment goes down as well. And we frequently don't have standby capacity, and maintenance has to be immediately addressed. So if maintenance is working on something else elsewhere in the plant, they have to drop what they're doing and move here. So we began the master plan knowing that background information that I just gave and knowing that there are many opportunities to improve dewatering in terms of reliability and functionality. And what we've really been doing during this master plan is evaluating the two options that you see on the right: building brand-new or rehabilitating the existing facility. And so this is another one of those tables, which shows the different drivers. And here we're juxtaposing the two options. As you can see, for the capacity driver, they both achieve the same objective of increasing capacity. And then skipping down to the bottom row, seismic, they've And then skipping down to the bottom row, seismic, they both achieve the same objective of improving seismic resiliency. But where there really are differences is the improved performance driver. So as you can see, there's many ways to enhance reliability for a new building. That's really across the entire industry. Building new is always very easy. There are synergistic benefits and there's also improvements to truck routing, site layout and odor control. And so we've already examined these two dewatering options during the master plan, but there remain several unknowns. And because it's such a big spending milestone, as I mentioned, on the order of $100 million, our next step is to perform a detailed engineering analysis to answer all our questions and really ensure that we have a no regrets investment. So one example of something that we need detailed engineering analysis to figure out is can we ensure continuous operations when we're rehabilitating the existing building? So we know that wastewater is generated 24/7, so that's no exception. That dewatering wouldn't ideally be working 24/7. So we would have to build some sort of temporary dewatering facility and operate it during the entire lifeline of the project, which would be over three years. So it would be like living through a three-year kitchen remodel. It would take a lot of energy and staff and we really want to make sure that we're
Really, it's a three-year bathroom remodel, but.
Yeah. Exactly. But so you can imagine that there's a number of things that you really need detailed engineering analysis to really get to the bottom of and to feel that you've made the competent right decision. And so here's our dewatering roadmap. In the near term, we have a capacity trigger. That's the bottleneck that we've described to you previously. And so rightsizing R2 has the benefit of improving capacity for a few years to delay any decision-making. But that doesn't address the multiple triggers that lie ahead, including another capacity trigger as population continues to grow, capacity does as well. We could have another infrastructure renewal trigger or a seismic trigger. It could be some combination of all of that, which leads us to this detailed engineering analysis to really examine these two options that we have. And once we've made a decision, then we would implement that solution. And as you can see from this map, if we rehabilitated the existing dewatering building, then that wouldn't require any new space. So this is the existing building located at the northern part, but still relatively central to the plant. If we built a new dewatering building, then we would put it here, just west of the digesters. And so as you heard about in Yoon's section previously, our side stream treatment facility would go just north of here. That offers some synergistic benefits to minimize piping distance. So you're saving not only on material and construction costs, but it also enhances O and M, our operations and maintenance over the long term. And as you'll hear about in the next section, our biosolids technology could potentially go right next to the dewatering building. So it would all be located together. And then having it on the western property boundary is more advantageous from the perspective of truck routing and odor control. So that concludes my section. And if there are no questions, then I'll pass it on to Rebecca, who will talk about biosolids.
So I have a question. I was intrigued by Eileen's initial discussion about Orla Loma and their ability to dry or have the land to dry out the the biosolids. And I understand, you know, we don't have that option. But what, what, how does that change the equation by being able to dry out things? They're lighter to transport. There's more options to get rid of those biosolids. I wasn't quite clear on that.
And maybe that's an excellent transition to Rebecca, who's our biosolids expert. She's going to be talking about biosolids, Director Lindy. So that was a great, I can answer it, but I might as well let Rebecca. But definitely by, you know, the way, one of the ways that Orla Loma keeps their costs down is because they're so dry, they're hauling a lot less. We're hauling so much water, really, if you think about it, with our biosolids. And then this is a nice segue to Rebecca. I don't want to steal her thunder about what we're looking at in the long term with our biosolids management. And with SB 1383, we know our current strategy is not going to be our long-term strategy. So maybe if it's okay, I'm going to turn it to Rebecca and let her walk you through in the biosolids, what we're considering for the future.
Sure. But they still have to dewater. They dewater is a step that they have to do. It's what they, what they do afterwards that's different than what we're.
And they have so much land, they can just lay it out and let it dry and dry. And by the time they're hauling away the biosolids, it's only, you know, it's really dry. We don't have that. We're continuing hauling biosolids on a continuous basis. We can't just put biosolids out on acres of land to dry.
Right. No, I understand that. I understand that. But but they still have to do the dewa. I mean, when we just talked about the dewatering facilities, my question, I guess, they still have to do that.
Yes.
But then they have an additional drying out that they can do beyond that. Is that right?
Exactly.
Thank you.
I remember when we used to have those mountains and mountains of stuff out there. And it was an elegant smell downwind. And we really upset the whole group of folks, so.
And we're not looking to look at that strategy. That's not our strategies right now. We're sensitive that the West Oakland neighborhoods, you know, grown over the, that was the early 90s when we were doing the cock grow. And that's not something composting. We don't want to get back into that. Or very sensitive to our West Oakland neighbors and we want to be a good neighbor. So with that, Rebecca, we'll let you talk about the biosolids for the future.
Sweet. Sounds good. Sounds good. Yes, just a little bit more about that. The Orla Loma's dried biosolids, they get scraped off and actually they have been sent to landfill historically. So they are drier, but are, they haven't been formulated to have an agriculture use. So that is an option in drying to pelletize and condition the biosolids to be good for agriculture in a very dry format. But what Orla Loma is doing is much more of a passive approach. That answers any more curiosity? All right. Well, so we have here, you know, at the end of the dewatering step that James described, we have the biosolids. And for us, that's 200 tons per day. It's nutrient-rich soil-like material and every day it's trucked off-site for beneficial use. Our biosolids currently have three end uses: land application on farms, landfills as alternative daily cover and compost feedstock. And as you can see from the numbers here in calendar year 2019, land application was our predominant use, but that use is weather dependent. We also relied heavily on landfill alternative daily cover during wet weather. And it is this option that is declining and will soon cease. Several solid waste initiatives have been phasing out organics in landfills for years, but the most impactful measure is actually an air quality measure. A Senate Bill 1383 is a new regulation targeted at reducing methane emissions from organics in landfills. And biosolids are classified as organics. So in short, we expect to no longer be able to practice landfill ADC by 2022, which is right around the corner. So I mean, in addition to the, this bill, the management economics are changing. We compete with other agencies for biosolids outlets. This competition will only get worse as new agencies like San Jose enter the market. San Jose is discontinuing the use of their slide sledge drying beds, which are similar to Orla Loma. Instead, San Jose is going to start doing what we do. And that's going to be sending the biosolids off as a wet cake with about 25% solids. So as shown by this chart, we have already seen our biosolids management costs begin to increase. And that did correlate with a reduction of organics going to landfills. So while we could still get the biosolids in there, several factors came together to make that more costly. So biosolids, of course, of course, a major component of the master plan. We looked at options for further processing the biosolids onsite. We began with 13 different technologies and they all went through a fatal flaws screening. And then we had eight technologies that we performed a more detailed analysis on and looked at operating scenarios for them. Finally, coming out of that, we selected two technologies that would go forward for planning purposes. And those were a post-digestion thermal dryer and pyrolysis. So here is the biosolids roadmap. There are so many uncertainties about the changing market and our solution is therefore very adaptive. In the near term, it remains most economical to negotiate new biosolids handling and management contracts. And we can influence those contracts in our favor. For example, we can lock them in for a longer term to secure a lower rate. And we will continue to monitor the changing economics. At a certain point, we think it's about when our costs double from where they are now, we will need to evaluate off-site storage, regional solutions and public-private partnerships. And if that approach sounds broad, it's because it is. There are many stakeholders involved in the industry and things are evolving pretty quickly. So we are going to have to sort of stay tuned and monitor. And we're basically preparing for a lot of possibilities. So perhaps one of those solutions will pan out, which were off-site storage or regional solutions, in which case we would implement that. If not, we may go further down the road and take an off-ramp to a post-digestion technology onsite. That would probably be triggered by economics or it could be triggered by a new regulation, such as if PFOS regulations affect what we can do with the biosolids. There is reason to think that a high-high heat process could destroy PFOS, but that comes at a huge cost. So post-digestion in general, the, these technologies, it refers to something after the anaerobic digesters. And there are several things to be, that can be done with biosolids at a, at a treatment plant. Some are more proven, some are still emerging. Between now and then, we're basically going to be continuing to track those developments, track how they are implemented in the US and on the West Coast in particular. This slide illustrates how a post-digestion technology fits into our master plan triggers. For the most part, there are benefits, hence the green. One benefit in particular is that by drying the biosolids out more, you have a much reduced volume and you can spend less on hauling and there's less greenhouse gases from hauling. But you will notice one red X here for process emissions. And stay tuned for that in the next section on climate change. Site-wise, we are holding space for a possible post-digestion technology. We've reserved this space just west of the digesters. It's not very large, but it is in an ideal location. And that would be where after dewatering, perhaps in a new dewatering building, we could then process the biosolids right there. And it also keeps it closer to the road for exit path for what trucks would need to come for the finished product. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt on climate change.
Thank you, Rebecca, and hello, everyone. So today I'll be talking about climate change in two topics, greenhouse gases and sea level rise. So reducing greenhouse gases is a top priority for the wastewater department. And here on the screen, you see our greenhouse gas emission goals for the wastewater department. So we're, as part of the master plan, we're doing everything we can to get to this goal by 2040. So these reduction goals, the 50% reduction of direct emissions and 100% reduction of indirect emissions by 2040 is based on a 2000 baseline. So 2000, the year 2000 may not seem that long ago, but for the wastewater department, things were much different back then. The R2 program began in 2002. So the baseline year represented a time when there were no emissions associated with R2. And you've heard a couple of times, a couple of references to how R2 affects our emissions so far. And the R2 program grew substantially then between 2002 and 2016. And since that time, our truck waste volume has remained roughly stable. So here you see the last four years of greenhouse gas emissions district-wide, showing the proportion from the water side and the wastewater side. And you see in 2019, that proportion from wastewater jumped substantially. The reason for that is we changed the way we calculated our greenhouse gas emissions. And it was due to the protocol we use from the climate registry. It included more sources of emissions than previously. So that framework that we use for calculating greenhouse gases, kind of a one-size-fits-all approach based on limited data sets. But at this stage, it's the best estimate we've got and the calculations we use that are developed by trusted sources, so we continue to use them. Here you see the four main sources of greenhouse gases of the plant. The emissions associated with the electricity we purchase, which are the indirect emissions, the emissions directly from our wastewater process tanks, emissions from the combustion of fossil fuels that we use, like diesel and natural gas, and then emissions that occur after we discharge our treated effluent into the bay. So unfortunately, the emissions we have least control over are our most significant sources. These are the treatment and discharge emissions shown here with the blue arrows. So human waste contains nitrogen. You heard about that previously. And that nitrogen will always be there in the raw sewage coming to our plant. If the population grows, the amount of nitrogen coming to the plant will grow with it. So when this nitrogen gets to the plant, a very small portion of it converts to nitrous oxide, N2O, which is a greenhouse gas 310 times more powerful than carbon dioxide. So little goes a long way. These emissions occur no matter what technology, treatment technology we choose or how we operate our facility. It's, and this is based on the consensus, consensus science available right now. You've heard us use the term, the science is evolving on this topic, but for right now, this is what we know. And as a result, our ability to reduce these emissions is extremely limited. The pie chart here shows the contribution of these sources to our overall emissions inventory. And the, by far the biggest is that 71% coming from the emissions after we discharge our treated effluent to the bay. And then if you combine that with the process emissions coming from our tanks, it's about three quarters of our emissions. These emissions are the direct result of the nitrogen coming to our plant that we by and large can't control. So next, I'd like to step through our so-called greenhouse gas roadmap for the next 30 years. I'm going to start with a scenario where we haven't optimized our emissions to show the scale of the challenge and how we can reduce it by taking actions that we've come up with as part of the master plan. I've mentioned the lack of control we have over some of these sources, but we do have control over other sources. So I'll, the next step, I'll walk through our optimized roadmap and show you the effect we can have. So here you see roughly the next 30 years of our overall emissions for the wastewater department. And you might be dismayed to see that over that 30 years, we may roughly the same point where we started. But we're battling against a growing population and those difficult to reduce emissions. So let's walk through some actions we're taking along the way. First, you'll see we right-size R2 and get that immediate drop when we reduce high-strength waste that have nitrogen in them. That, that reduces our discharge with little downsides. Pretty, pretty straightforward. Our next step is to implement side stream treatment, which further reduces nitrogen or effluent, but comes with drawbacks. The emissions from our treatment processes will actually increase and we need to purchase more power for this side stream treatment process. Next, we implement a post-digestion process to reduce the biosolids we haul and create a useful product. That process doesn't increase emissions on its own, but as part of it, will divert biogas to heat that process. And therefore, we can't produce as much renewable electricity. And so we would require more electricity purchases. Last, and with at least certain timeline, because it depends on our regulators, we would implement a mainstream nitrogen removal process. And you'll notice in this case, a very modest decrease in emissions, but it's as a result of the fact that that process will require a lot more electricity demand and will be increasing our emissions from our treatment process tanks. So here's the graphic showing our roadmap, the places where we can make some decisions. So the good news is that unoptimized roadmap I just showed can be improved. So to reduce our direct emissions, we can implement nitrogen removal like side stream or rightsizing R2 and potentially other innovative nitrogen removal processes that some of our engineers are working on and thinking up right now. We can also replace our petroleum diesel use with renewable diesel, like we've done for, in our fleet, although it comes at a cost because renewable diesel used for stationary generators, like we use it at the plant, doesn't have the same incentives as for transportation fuel. We could also replace our natural gas building and water heating with electrified versions to reduce our fossil fuel emissions or possibly even use waste heat to heat some of our buildings. And for indirect emissions, our goal is to get to zero by 2040. We don't have many options to reduce our electricity demand because as you've heard, our future projects will by and large require more electricity. And we also don't have many opportunities to increase renewable electricity generation at the plant. to increase renewable electricity generation at the plant beyond what we already do. So our best option is to reduce indirect emissions is to purchase 100% renewable electricity. And like renewable diesel, that will come at a cost. The current rates are not quite, but close to two times what we pay for electricity at the plant right now. Hopefully, that will improve over time. That's where the trends are going.
Excuse me for a second, Matt.
Sure.
So my question is, if that is going to be more expensive, have we done a kind of side-by-side comparison to see what, if any, value there would be to continuing to use our own gases to produce the electricity? And does that pencil out where we're either breaking even or maybe making a penny or two?
I think at this stage, we produce enough renewable electricity on our own, but as the demands increase, the decision will be different. And so I think you're asking if we can produce more renewable electricity on our own?
Yeah. I think part of the answer, Director Mellon, is this is looking at the cost of the turbine. The turbine's aging, and the operations and maintenance contract for it has increased over years. When the district purchased the turbine back in 2011, the thought was our own maintenance staff was going to maintain that. It didn't happen. And unfortunately, we're kind of held hostage by the vendor. So we have to go enter these multi-year contracts with solar, and the costs have increased over time. So we're looking at the cost of continuing to maintain the turbine versus the decrease in the cost of electricity and what our electricity needs are at the plant. And then we're also looking, we've had a very lucrative contract with the Port of Oakland that will be expiring in 2022. Initially, when the turbine came online, we're making $71 a megawatt hour. When that contract expired, staff did a great job and got $54 a megawatt hour. I think, I don't want to, this is a public meeting, but we're not, it'll be very difficult to get $54 a megawatt hour. So I think some trigger points in looking at electricity in our R2 program comes at a point when the fork in the road is when the Port of Oakland contract expires and what could we really get for the electricity we generate? And what is the cost? The real cost to maintain that turbine has increased to over three-quarters of $1 million a year. And just the contract with solar doesn't include all the stuff that our staff also does with the ancillary equipment. So it's looking at the changing dynamics since we installed the turbine.
I have a potentially ignorant question.
There's no ignorant question.
Well, I am ignorant on the topic, so without judgment. It is whether or not, you know, everybody's talking about decarbonizing everything. And heat pumps, at least, are the answer on, you know, on some level. I don't know. It's probably the levels of heat that we're talking about would not be achievable. And maybe we don't have the land area or geology, maybe even better term, to, you know, do the, you know, drilling and field setup for using heat pump, which is much more efficient than, you know, it's a much more efficient way to generate heat than, you know, using electricity to then generate heat, if you know what I mean. I have no idea whether it can be done at the kind of scale that we'd be talking about.
I think, and you'll see this in a second, one of our approaches for offsetting our natural gas use. We don't use all that much natural gas right now, because it's mainly for our building heating and for our water heating. And we could replace that with an electric heat pump, or it sounds like you're kind of referring to a, like a geothermal type?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that, we haven't looked at, but we could certainly look at the cost.
I don't know. Because of beyond the bay, I don't know if it works or not, but.
Right, right.
Certainly have a lot of real estate. So if we're tearing things up, you know, it's the thought.
This is John. I sort of have a follow-up question to it. Marguerite and Frank asked. If we're looking at their contracts down the road on renewable, I always tout that, you know, how we produce so much energy at wastewater. When we're negotiating these contracts, whether it be with MCI or Marine Clean Energy, MCE, I guess it is, and others, can it be included in that we have a reciprocal receiving, coming back on some of this energy versus it seems to be more one-way street? We sell it, they get it, and then they can market it. And we don't, and the only benefit we get is some revenue. Why can't the agreements be reciprocal, where we get help to run our facilities at a lower cost per watt?
And I would say that's something we can look at when the contract comes up with the Port of Oakland. You know, we will put out a request for proposals, and we can see, I think that at that time, we want to see where we can enter into a good partnership, potentially, and what's the value that we would get for the electricity? And how do we best get our value for the district? So that's something we can definitely look at.
And thank you. And finally, have we looked on our facilities there installing solar? I mean, maybe, granted, it only works during certain times of the day, and maybe the fog limits. And when it's foggy, how much power is generated? But we have a lot of rooftop down there that we could do, even over, quite frankly, of our tanks, if it could be built like it's done in some countries.
And that's something, Director Coleman, we can definitely look at. I think we first want to rehab some of these before we put the solar on top.
Makes sense.
Eric, you know, the de-watering building, I agree with him, it's going to have to be rebuilt. And so maybe when we have.
It's going to be blown up.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But we have to use it while we're building.
Sell tickets for that and generate some revenue.
Right, right, right. So it's definitely something in the future once we invest in some of the aging infrastructure and as part of, you know, rebuilding our infrastructure, something we can look at where there's opportunities to install solar, since solar's come down in cost.
Great, thank you.
Since we're on the topic of the economics of our power sales and challenges making that match, I'm interested in if we've kind of thought out, in light of the state's goals of heading towards 100% renewable energy, the increase in costs as the state gets closer to that goal. In the short term, a lot of these costs are coming down, but some products may have some increased value at certain times of day. Have we looked at that long-term economics, you know, to identify? Is there a future date when our renewable energy economics would start to come with the added value, you know, beyond the price range that we're able to market, you know, in the near term? You know, in the next five years, it does seem like we are stuck with this economics that puts us in a holding pattern. But have we looked ahead further to understand what are different economists and industry leaders saying about where the market economics may go further?
And I guess in response to your question, Director Katz, we continue to look at the market and see what it holds. And as you nicely pointed out with SB 100, we're going to be all renewable in California by 2045. So we're continuing to monitor. So I think that's part of the message of this master plan. It's not like we have a direct roadmap for the future. There's off-ramps, on-ramps. And so we want to continue to evaluate what's the cost of electricity? What's the cost to run the turbine? What's, you know, and looking at everything holistically, what makes the best sense? So it's something we continue to monitor.
Eileen, this is Clifford. One other consideration is SB 100 excludes the WAPA power that you purchase. So WAPA doesn't have to meet the SB 100 requirements.
Right. So we were thinking by continuing to use the WAPA power, we could buy REX, and that would still keep it cheap, and we could still meet our goals.
Thanks, Clifford. What I meant to point out was our own ability to sell power may be of increased value in the much longer term. So currently, with the state only requiring 60% renewable energy, that the demands on available sources doesn't create the higher prices that may be of interest. But I think there could be a possibility that there would be a market that would be available at a higher price or that would be willing to pay a higher price as the state pushes towards 100%. But I think it's hard to know that for sure. So, you know, I think the staff assessment of where we are in the next five years or so is spot-on. But I wanted to point out, in terms of no-regrets decision-making, some of these unknowns.
Yeah, no, excellent point. That's why we're going to continue to evaluate. I think, you know, that's part of our job, is looking at where we are now, where we're going to be in five years, 10 years, and adjust our roadmap as need be.
And I just ask a question on how we're doing timewise.
I think we're doing well. He's going to be up. I think we're pretty much on schedule, President.
Okay, good.
Okay, so next slide will show if we implement some of these proactive steps, what happens to our roadmap. So here, picture's a little bit better. You see the reduction over that timeframe. And let's walk through those changes, so you can see what we've done. So we still right-sized our tube to reduce our nitrogen load. We've switched to renewable diesel, so that reduces our direct emissions. We've electrified building and water heating and purchased only renewable electricity by 2030. So what we're left with is only our direct emissions related to nitrogen. So the next step would be implementing side-stream, like I mentioned. And so you can see it's a much more noticeable drop when you have reduced those other sources of emissions. And then the next, the last step, that partial mainstream nutrient removal is dependent on our regulators and when those regulations would go into place. But you can see, because we've really reduced our other emissions, the drop is more noticeable than the previous graph. And, but still, when we change to that process, you see that our process emissions from our process tanks increase and our discharge emissions decrease. So, but of course, you're asking, okay, we've reduced our indirect emissions by 100%, but what about those direct emissions? We want to reduce by 50% by 2040. Well, we have hope, and it comes from our biosolids. So right now, under our current biosolids management strategy, we're contributing to carbon sequestration in the soil where we land to apply our biosolids. The trick is that, according to our greenhouse gas inventory accounting practices, the district does not get the credit for that. We don't control those biosolids once our biosolids handler comes to truck it away. Therefore, it's called the Scope 3 emission outside of our inventory. However, the Climate Registry has told us that we could potentially capture that benefit in our biosolids if we do a few things, and we're working on this with them. First, demonstrate through peer-reviewed science that estimates of this carbon sequestration benefit are there and established in the science. Two, we can enter into an agreement with our biosolids handler to ensure that the district gets the benefit and that they, the handler, doesn't double-count that benefit. And we can accomplish both of these and are working on them right now. We can include that second item as a part of our biosolids handling contract. So the benefit here is somewhere in this range between 5,000 and 10,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per year, which you can see is quite large relative to our optimized emissions and could get us under that 50% reduction. So to summarize, let's talk about what we know and what we don't know. So first, our knowns. There are near-term ways we can reduce some of our greenhouse gas emissions, and they come at a cost, but these actions would certainly reduce our emissions. Second, that purchased electricity will continue to become increasingly renewable because of SB 100, 100% renewable by 2045. And we can proactively purchase renewable electricity sooner than that or buy REX. And then finally, the emissions, the challenge, the emissions derived from human waste will continue to increase with population, and we don't have any control over that. So the unknowns here are, we've said that the term "science is evolving." So the Climate Registry's protocol for calculating greenhouse gases is likely to change once again. So that's the bad news, is that they're including more sources into our inventory likely soon. We're working on this right now with them. There's a technical discussion group of wastewater industry folks in California talking about this, but it looks like there'll be two new sources, additional nitrous oxide sources, but also methane emissions to our process and discharge that weren't there before. We're working on refining those, making sure they're not overcounting. And so we'll have more news in the future, but still in progress right now. Secondly, the Climate Registry, will they allow us to account for that carbon sequestration benefit in the biosolids? We are confident that they will, but we're still in the process of an initial dialogue, their number of factors to sort through, so working on that. And then, of course, the unknown is when will these roadmap triggers actually happen? Specifically, it's about our regulations related to nitrogen removal. We'll see, like Eileen said, we're continuing to monitor, and we're actively involved, so we'll help, we'll learn more as time goes on. So now, I'd like to switch over to sea level rise. This slide you saw during the virtual tour. And the reason we showed this one is that of all of our wastewater facilities, the de-chlorination facility is one, both one of our most critical and most vulnerable to sea level rise, because it's located near the shoreline. Sea level rise is something we have been actively investigating as part of the master plan and will continue to monitor, because the science evolves here as well over time. And here, we show four progressively worse scenarios for sea level rise. You can see around five and a half feet, the area around the de-chlor facility is inundated. But fortunately, that condition is expected to occur only in the year 2100, and with a storm surge on top of that. So these time estimates are based on the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, RCP 8.5 scenario, which is the worst case scenario that they analyze, and it's therefore conservative. So it's a scenario where greenhouse gas emissions continue to rise in an uncontrolled manner through the year 2100. So we feel we're being proactive and looking at all likely scenarios. And we've already adjusted our designs of the de-chlor facility to account for rising seas and are working in close cooperation with other public agency stakeholders in this area, the foot of the Bay Bridge, to ensure that the future infrastructure around this location, there's a new park there, to ensure that it's protected from sea level rise.
Matt, are we looking at the possibility that we may have to build our own levees?
In this case, I don't think we would have to build our own levees. There might be some sort of, it's a little bit speculative at this point, because I mentioned there's a new park, that's a shoreline park that these Bay Regional Parks has just opened here. And they have a planning process for, you know, designing more features over time. And I think as part of that, they'll be looking at seawalls or other types of infrastructure that would protect.
Matt, isn't the, is it Measure AA, the regional bay bonds that are also contemplating paying for seawalls to protect critical infrastructure, et cetera?
Yes, I've heard that same thing, yes.
Do we participate in that, Eileen? Or are we part of that? I know John, I'm sure John is, but.
We participate with San Francisco Estuary Institute, that they've been leading a lot of the studies. We've also been involved with SPUR, who's done a lot in San Francisco. So we've been involved with the stakeholders and SFEIs trying to bring their groups together. So as Matt says, it's a regional problem, needs a regional solution. And we're actually lucky that they just built that shoreline park right adjacent to our de-chlor. So we're not there alone. It's going to, we'll be able to, you know, get funding and work with others.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that there's a commission or a, I mean, you know, there's a structure for the, you know, planning and expenditure of those, the bonds for the bay that, you know, I don't know how governmental agencies are represented on that advisory commission or in that, you know, sort of quasi-governmental agency, and maybe John knows. Director Coleman? Maybe he's not. Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, what?
Just asking, we were talking about, you know, sea level rise and inundation of the de-chlorination facility. And he asked about whether they're, the Measure AA funding would, you know, sort of pay, help pay for any, you know, seawalls or things that we need to. funding would, you know, sort of pay, help pay for any, you know, seawalls or things that we need to would need to be added in that area. And then also just to ask, what is, you know, how is East Bay mod represented in the, you know, the the planning and execution of that, the, you know, nine county bay, you know, planning authority for the for the expenditure of the bonds, which is a sort of a more general question about the governance of that and how we interact with that. And I thought you would know because of your Bay Planning Coalition.
Yeah, coastal conservancy, the coastal conservancy is administrator of the grant funds, one. And each county needs to put forward a plan of what they want to use the money for. It can go for gray infrastructure, but it's preferred for green infrastructure. But something like this should be should qualify. But we would need to work with Alameda County and their representatives to try and get it included in the coastal conservancies fund request. And once a year, now twice a year, I guess, they release what money is available.
Thank you.
Okay, so continuing on, we got a question about this and we wanted to share a little during the virtual tour. And we wanted to share a little bit more of how sea level rise is impacting the main wastewater treatment plant. And here again, we have four scenarios for sea level rise, showing the area around the main wastewater treatment plant. Fortunately for us, the plant is less vulnerable to rising seas than decor. So and it doesn't see really any impact until sea level rises by 52 inches. That's over four feet. But even so, we're planning and designing all of our projects proactively to eliminate vulnerabilities due to inundation from sea level rise, using those worst case scenarios from IPCC. And as you can see from these aerial photos, it's not just our plant, but other, there's other critical infrastructure around it. Interstate highways, Bay Bridge, the Port of Oakland and the neighborhoods around where people live in West Oakland. And so as a result, you know, we have these shared responsibilities. And we've been active in regional groups on climate change and sea level rise, bringing together agencies from all over the region to collaborate on strategies to adapt to climate change and seal the rise in order in order to find ways that we can partner for win win solutions. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Eileen if nobody has any questions.
Great. Thanks, Matt. I'm going to wrap up here with synthesizing the roadmap and conclusions. And as you've seen today throughout the presentation, various site layouts during each section. But now what we want to do in this next aerial is we want to superimpose them all so that you can see everything can fit into the existing property boundary. And this is something that we generally weren't sure was possible before the master plan. So it's great to see that we can reap, we can actually build a new D water in building as Eric recognized we badly need. We can do side streams treatment, mainstream treatment if we ever need to in the future and do post digesting technology and still have the space to do everything. And then, as we emphasize during the virtual tour, our infrastructure is aging. So rehabilitating the infrastructure will always be a core component to our work here in the wastewater department and also for the water system. And then, as a result, here we're showing our timeline that infrastructure renewal will never end. It's kind of like the grass that keeps coming up through the holes in the ground. It keeps coming up again. The infrastructure continues to need to be renewed. And then at the virtual tour, we also emphasize our seismic vulnerabilities. And as you can see on this aerial photo, there's much variation in seismic risk at the main wastewater treatment plant. The red colored buildings are the ones that are high risk. The orange is medium risk and then the green is low risk. And the yellow stars represent the buildings in which our employees work. So as we plan our seismic retrofits for the upcoming years, we've really, our number one priority is the safety of our employees. So we're really focusing on the buildings where our employees were. And then we prioritize the projects. And this is just showing you that the seismic code changes often. So we're choosing to show the seismic timeline with an arrow on the right, continuing into the future. As earthquakes occur around the world, we keep seeing the seismic codes getting more strict. So our goal now is to bring up our buildings to the latest seismic codes. But knowing in 2030 years, they'll probably have to be retrofitted again. And then here's an aerial map showing the different seismic projects we've selected for the next 10 year capital improvement program. The seismic retrofits will be phased over 10 years at about $15 million per year. And as you can see, the five stars, the five facilities with yellow stars. And as I mentioned, that's where staff work. And in particular, the most staff is concentrated in our maintenance center, the admin building, the lab building and our operations center. So it's important that we retrofit those and protect our employees during an earthquake. And now let's add on three additional timelines for nutrients, dewatering and biosolids. For nutrients, you can see in the near term that we will right size our two and continue to evaluate innovative, low cost solutions. At some point, we'll have our offering to side stream treatment. And maybe at some point to the end of our planning horizon, we may have to do mainstream treatment. But we don't know. We're going to let the science, we're funding the science through SFEI and have the support of the regional board and EPA to let the science dictate whether we ever have to go there. For dewatering, in the near term, we're just going to evaluate whether we build a new dewatering or we have the existing. But we know we have to execute on a solution soon, as Eric kindly remind us at the beginning of the presentation. And for biosolids, we will continue to use handling and management contracts for the foreseeable future. But in parallel, we're going to evaluate off storage, regional collaborations and public private partnerships. And now that we kind of shown you the timeline, I want to move on to show you the spending components. Here's a pie chart showing the 10 year CIP breakdowns in terms of infrastructure renewal. And you can see the largest component is for that infrastructure renewal. We didn't talk about every building at the plant today. We didn't talk about every pump and motor because we don't have time. But basically, 61% of our spending for the next 10 years is focused on the aging infrastructure and that dewatering building that will probably cost about $100 million to rebuild. The next largest component is seismic. That's a priority. As you recall, in 1994, the board approved the seismic improvement program for the waterside. But there's never been a seismic program for the wastewater system. So for the next 10 years, we plan to really focus 18% of our CIP on seismic retrofits. And then about 16% will be focused on nutrients. And then there's about 5% for dewatering. So that kind of gives you the pie chart view. And the next graph shows the same data as the previous slide, but it shows you on a yearly basis what you can see. And once again, spinning for aging infrastructure is the number one priority. And you can see how our seismic costs will increase over time as we get the designs done and start moving those projects to construction. So the key takeaways is capital spending will increase over the next decade. Seismic projects are strategically faced throughout the next 10 year CIP, focusing number one on the safety of our employees. And then we're preparing for nutrient regulations with a multi prong approach. First, not spending any capital on right sizing R2 and reducing our nutrient load by about 20%. Then we're going to implement low cost solutions. And eventually, we'll probably have to do side stream treatment, which is estimated to cost about $100 million, substantially less than mainstream treatment at estimated over a billion dollars. And then dewatering can be delayed in the short term due to right size R2. And it gives us just enough time to get through the planning and design for retrofitting and rebuilding the new dewatering building. And then on this next slide, I'm going to show you just what are the projects in the two year CIP. We're actively addressing our aging infrastructure and the blue colored buildings are getting seismic upgraded in the next two years. The pink is the concrete, the light blues mechanical, and the yellow shows you the electrical upgrades. And then the lime green is nutrients and then the dark green is other. So we're actively investing in our aging infrastructure. And then I want to respond to a question on the virtual tour. Director Coleman asks about ways to generate additional revenue. And this is something that we evaluated throughout the master plan. On the top are promising options, which include leasing land, which we're currently doing. We're currently making about $660,000 a year and a new lease that we executed after the Veritas lease ended. And then we're also in working with real estate and negotiating another leasing agreement for the wastewater plant. We also rely on fees on property tax walls. We're looking at getting revenue from more billboards. And then, of course, we look for grants and low interest loans. I've been communicating our master plan to the regional board and the regulator so they can get an appreciation that nutrients is not the only thing we need to spend money on and that we're going to need to probably get some sort of state or federal funding to help fund the nutrient upgrades in the Bay area. And then on the bottom row are options that aren't promising at the moment, but we should keep monitor. And these include biosolids receiving, new biosolid products and recovered nutrients. And then some of our R2 waste streams are very profitable and low impact, while others are less profitable and high impact. We saw a number of our chemicals at the wastewater treatment plant increased by over 30% over last year. So we think there are optimization opportunities with R2. So we'll implement strategic pricing. However, this isn't exactly a way to generate revenue. Rather, I'd like to point out it's a way to keep up with the rising O and M cost so that the R2 program remains financially independent and is not subsidized by our ratepayers. And if there's no questions, I'll move on to conclusions and next steps.
I just have one sort of silly question. What's the salt and pepper shaker signify?
The salt and.
Profitable and low impact.
Oh, right, right. And so kind of like you're balancing, you're balancing, you know, kind of like there's salt and pepper. And and also, we're looking at the salts. They're looking at brine from the Central Valley that they may want to use us as part of the solution.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that may be an opportunity for the.
Right, so it wouldn't contribute much to our, to the energy part, but it would help with the dilution, they, we could get a lot of money for, I got it, I got it.
We can get money and generate literacy. What we want to look at with each each new waste stream and even our current waste stream that we didn't look at back in 2002 wasn't an issue. But we want to look at how much does it increase our nutrients? Because if it increases our loads, it's counter to that. We also want to look at, even though R2 has got global benefits, we're sensitive to the district's goals to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. We don't get credit for that trucked waste we bring in. We're creating greenhouse gas emissions that we didn't own. So that, so that's where we're looking at the R2 program differently in the future than we did when it was, you know, begun in 2002. Okay, and if no other questions, I'll move on to conclusions and next steps.
Do I have a question? Sorry, Eileen. I guess the obvious one, which is, you know, the the capital improvement project, what kind of pressure does this put on our rates? And and how does this change kind of the trajectory that we might have had, say, five years ago for our capital improvement plans for for the wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah, and I'll just quickly go back to the bar graph that shows our 10 year CIP. So it's an excellent question. And as you can see on this bar graph, you can see our spending is going to increase over time. The good news is we've been planning for this day for the last three and a half years. Alex and I have been planning for this day. And so we've really have not been taking out debt over the last several years. We've been paying off our debt. So we don't have the big debt that the water system has and we have a big borrowing capacity. So we're, and we're going to work very closely. And we've been in dialogue with Sophia and her team about planning for the future. But we do have a good borrowing capacity. And so we think we can do this and still keep our rates very reasonable. We're not planning to do what San Mateo did. And that's when they decide to build a new plant with new nutrient treatment, they increase their rates by 100%. We don't plan to do that at all. So we plan to keep our rates.
So maybe 90%, not 100.
No, no, no. We want to keep our rates very reasonable and we've got good borrowing capacity. We've been planning for this day and to just make good holistic decisions.
And and so that means when you say a good borrowing capacity, that means we can spread out the costs over a number of years and not have a sudden jolt.
Correct, correct. We want steady, steady rate increases. We don't want to do what San Mateo to me is the poster child of what not to do to suddenly increase your rates by 100% in a year. So right, we want smooth rates and that was our thinking with the seismic investments, the infrastructure, and even how we've been strategic with our nutrients and working with the regulators. You know, we get to defer side stream treatment for many years by optimizing the R2 program.
Right, but so if if I were to look at this and compare this to, again, let's just take five years ago, you say you've been planning for this and that. But was it in, you know, obviously, the last five years here wouldn't have been in a 10 year CIP five years ago. But is this still kind of within, if in your 20 year CIP plan, and I presume that there's some sort of 20 year, at least kind of a nebulous CIT plan, CIP plan going forward. Is this, you know, a significant increase over what you were expecting? Because you found all this with the master plan that you did? Or is this kind of all not, no big surprises?
Yeah, no, I say no surprises. In fact, I think by taking that, by optimizing R2, it's allowing us to push out side stream treatment. And by phasing, we can't do all the seismic retrofits at once. It's kind of like President Young says, you know, it's remodeling, you know, a bathroom. Well, there's so many buildings. So I think of anything what's kind of surprises with our budget is how much our our costs have gone up for chemicals and biosolids management. Some of our chemicals increased over 40% last year. So we've kind of planned for this with having the borrowing capacity. We've been paying down our debt the last several years. So I, it's not going to be a huge hit, the capital, you know, we're not looking at doubling our rates.
All right, thank you.
Certainly. Yes.
My question, it's not so much a question is, I'm concerned about looking at how it's getting cheaper to buy energy than to make our own. But there's an advantage to making our own. And if we could find a way to make it more efficiently or less expensive. But the the advantage I see is there's, unlike the bad situation we had a month or so ago, we generate our own electricity, we're self sufficient. PG&E is not, we're not a slave to PG&E. We're, we're, you know, we're taking care of ourselves. And so there is a, I don't know how to express this, and I'm sure Sophia would go nuts hearing me say this. But there's a value to owning the ability to use what would otherwise be a waste product for us and making it into energy, even though it might be a little bit more expensive. It's the independence that we have of the operations. And so I'm hoping that part of your planning is please look to the fact that we know that these costs are going to change, but there is a psychic value to being energy independent.
And we definitely agree with you, Director Mellon. And that's why we revise the KPI. Our goal is to produce enough energy to meet our needs at the plant. But it may not be profitable to sell it. So that's what we're looking at with the change in dynamic. So the K, the new KPI for the wastewater department is to take our biogas and produce enough, 100% of the electricity on site. So we're not changing from that. What we changed from was the thought of selling it externally. And that's something we want to evaluate when the contract with the Port of Oakland expires.
That wasn't so clear in slide 25 when that was discussed. I appreciate what you're saying. Thank you. That makes makes me feel more comfortable.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, and so then I'll wrap up our presentation and just, as we've mentioned throughout the presentation, there's many uncertainties that we're going to track. And this includes not only triggers like population and growth and regulations, but also the technological advancements. And so, you know, by right sizing R2 to reduce nutrients gives us several years for the technology to evolve, to get more sophisticated and to be much more economical. So we're going to continue to explore and test cost effective solutions. And then there's so many different stakeholders involved in the wastewater industry. We're going to continue to engage at the regional, state and national levels to provide our valuable utility perspective. And then just kind of to summarize the master plan in a few thoughts. First, the master plan was a valuable investment of time and money. And it's going to allow us to make no regrets investments in our infrastructure and make the best use of the ratepayer dollars. Second, the master plan greatly benefited the department's organizational learning, both past and future. And then the master plan is going to end here soon, but that's not when the work stops. Managing our infrastructure, also known as asset management, is a continuous activity that's going to remain critical for both the wastewater system and the water system in order for us to meet our mission as a district. And then the wastewater industry is rapidly changing, and our job will be to adapt and turn these challenges into opportunities, just like we've done in the past. And then there was one comment from the virtual tour that I'd like to respond to, and that was President Young wanted to see our staff at the plant and hear them comment on the master plan. So here you go with the video.
Hi, I'm Clayton, this mechanic Pat Virgin. When I came down to the plant almost 30 years ago, things were a little different than they are now. It's great that there's a master plan that's got things focused and goals to reach, and that we have new equipment being put in every day. It seems like there's something new, making our jobs easier, safer, and better for the environment, and it's just a wonderful place to work for now.
Hi, my name is Curtis Payne. I'm an operator in training here at the district, and I've been here for six months. There's a very steep learning curve here at the plant, but I'm excited and committed to the district's goal of protecting the public and the environment.
Hi, my name is Adam Cologne. I'm an operator in training, also here for six months. I'm very excited for the new changes coming to this plant and seeing them throughout my career.
So as you can see, our staff at the plant are really excited about the master plan and the changes planned for the future. And we just wanted you to get a chance to see some of our operators and hear from them. And then finally, I'd like to finish with a quote from President Harry Truman, who died just a few months after the Clean Water Act was passed in 1972. He said, "You can always amend a big plan, but you can never expand a little one. I don't believe in little plans. I believe in plans big enough to meet a situation which we can't possibly foresee now." And that, with that, I'd like to say thank you so much for your time today, and we open it to any questions.
Any other questions from board members? Lisa?
I don't have a question, but first of all, I apologize for missing the virtual tour. I can see how it would have sort of better prepared me for today. But this is a wonderful, aggressive, and thoughtful plan and long overdue, and we need it to stay competitive, to keep our employees safe, and to protect the environment. So I'm excited about everything that's coming. Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
Yeah, I very much appreciate the complexity of the planning process and the, I don't know, adaptability of dealing with unknowns as they emerge and really trying to put us on a footing to make no regrets decisions and remain, you know, sort of flexible and mindful of, you know, all of the goals that we have. And so, so really appreciate the work that, that y'all have put into it. I am mindful of our time, however. And we have a pretty packed closed session agenda, I think, that will, is going to take us through most of our time, so.
President-
I, I think if we have maybe 10 more minutes, go to 11:10. I was checking with Craig on the timing, and I think that will give us enough time to cover the few water slides that we have.
Okay.
Director, President Young, I do have a comment I'd like to make.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you to Director White and the staff for presenting this master plan. I think the rationale for this right-sized R2 and the capital improvement plan that stages what we need in a strategic order while keeping our system maintained and operating, it makes a lot of sense. It's time to invest. But it's also important that our resources not go to waste, particularly as they relate to greenhouse gas recovery. I agree with Director Mellon that we don't want those resources to go to waste. And I also include in that some of the synergy of the infrastructure that's already there at a wastewater treatment plant as it relates to some of the food waste disposal needs in the community, particularly from a greenhouse gas perspective. So in that sense, I'm thinking about for the capital improvements that don't pencil out today but have regional sustainability, thinking about very, very long-term opportunities with food waste disposal and with biosolid reduction. I like the idea of seeking grants and loans, but also developing more of an articulated vision for what grants could be proposed for the projects that aren't viable today but could be viable with additional support. And these might not be in existing programs that the state or federal government have already established. They might, we might actually need to be proposing a new program, not just a grant that fits neatly within an existing program. Along those lines, I'm also concerned about long-term digester space, either as a part of accommodating those food waste disposal needs in our local community, but also in that reducing biosolids footprint. So the presentation made it very clear that there's no economic viable path in the near term for these more complex regional problems, but we should also be careful not to preclude it from a land use perspective. So from that no regrets perspective, it looks to me like the current configuration and the facilities proposed today, it still allows for some space for longer-term expansion. But as we evaluate the siting for facilities like post digestion, that we consider the throughput that could be required long-term and reserve appropriate space for those scenarios that are beyond the timeframe of this master plan but are within the lifecycle of the facilities.
Great, thank you. And we concur with that, Director Katz.
President Young, we have one public commenter.
But we have another presentation.
Okay.
So if it's at the end, we either need to open it back up again after the next one or just wait.
Okay.
I mean, it, does it pertain to the-
This was a, so this person attended the tour and, or the tour on the 10th, and so I'm believing that it pertains to the wastewater section of the presentation specifically.
Okay, well, then let's go ahead and take it.
Thank you.
And we'll see if anything else comes up on the water.
Okay. Kelly Hammergrin, if you can unmute yourself, and I will give you three minutes, and your time will start now.
I only need 30 seconds.
Okay.
Thank you. This was excellent. And then I just want to pose a, maybe you're already thinking about this, you don't, I don't expect an answer, but looking at the exponential growth of COVID, I'm just wondering if you're thinking about PPE because we are probably going to be running into shortages again. And so I just wanted to put that on the radar, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And yes, we are, we, because we do know that wastewater has COVID in it, so we're especially sunset for our wastewater operators and all our staff who work out in the field. So thank you for bringing that up, and yes, the safety of our employees is a number-one priority at the district.
Okay, so we'll move on to the water presentation, and Jimmy, maybe you can just keep the time in mind, please.
Yes, I am. So, good morning, President Young and members of the board. We will try and get through this fairly quickly. We're here to give you a brief update on the water system. Most of the information should be familiar to you as it was presented in the workshop last year. Serge Terentyev, the manager of design, and Carlton Chan, the manager of pipeline infrastructure, will be participating along with me. So as Eileen mentioned earlier in the presentation, the water system has had a number of master plans and studies put together, and these plans, in conjunction with the information we get from our maintenance programs, inform the five-year CIP with a focus on safety, water quality, and reliability. This is the current capital improvement program, and as you can see in that program, over half of the program is devoted to pipeline infrastructure. We also have water treatment plants, reservoirs, raw water facilities, and our pumping plants, and those facilities, along with the pipelines, make up about 86% of our CIP. So infrastructure is a large focus of our CIP. Now I'm going to pass it over to Serge Terentyev, who will talk about some of the facilities.
Thank you, Jimmy. I'll provide some highlights in the next few slides of facility projects that are in our CIP, starting with raw water as an asset class. As Jimmy mentioned in the last slide, raw water makes up almost 10% of our CIP budget, and I've highlighted some projects here, five projects that are currently in progress to improve our raw water system, totaling about $130 million in investment in the next five years. I've also listed some of the goals and drivers for these projects. We're currently in design for the party chemical facility. This project will improve our chemical feed system, really with the goal of reducing the corrosivity of our raw water. And that's really important for us to be able to protect our aqueducts before they're relined. Next is the aqueduct relining project. That project will replace deteriorated mortar lining in McCollum Aqueduct Number Two, as well as some of the elevated segments you can see in this picture here for Number Two and Number Three. We'll complete a pilot in the next few years to try different lining materials, and the results of that pilot will be used to really help guide future relining efforts. We also have a project to reline Lafayette Aqueduct Number One, that's a nine-foot diameter aqueduct that provides raw water to inline plants, Lafayette and Arinda. That project will reline a 1929 nine-foot diameter pipe that has a long history of leaks. We are planning operating the Abraunis Tower to make sure it can withstand large earthquakes. And we also have a project, the last one highlighted here, to make some improvement by adding a hypo-lymphatic oxygenation system in our San Pablo reservoir. That's an important project to really improve the source water quality, which will in turn improve the finished water quality for our treatment plants. Next, second asset class I wanted to provide some quick highlights for is our treatment plant improvement program. As an asset class, treatment plants really represents the second-largest capital investment after pipelines, so it's a very important program. I'm not going to go over all these projects, but what I've done here is really summarized about eight projects that are currently, we're currently working on and will be for the next five years, both at our inline plants at Wallen Creek and Arinda that are highlighted here on the left, and also at our conventional plants at Sobrana and USL. I've listed some of the goals here. For all of these projects, the goal is to improve water quality, safety, and reliability. I did want to highlight underwater quality. A majority of these projects really also will improve drought reliability at our plants and disaster resilience, and that's really important because we anticipate a lot of impacts from climate change on our raw water, and that will impact our ability to treat different water qualities at our plants. All of these projects that are highlighted here are really large and complex projects that take anywhere from five to 10 years to complete. As Eileen mentioned in the beginning of her presentation, we have a lot of master plan studies we've completed. Most recently, 2018, we did a treatment and transmission study that we're really using now as a guide or roadmap that really helped set the priorities for the sequencing of improvements for the next 10 to 15 years for all of our treatment plants, and we're really following that guiding document. We also looked at the long-term needs for our plants and identified a number of distribution improvements that are needed for us to eventually decommission San Pablo Water Treatment Plant and also eventually phase out Lafayette Water Treatment Plant. So I did want to note that our long-term goal is really to eventually transition from six to the four core treatment plants that are highlighted here. Next, the only project I was going to highlight is really our largest capital project on the waterside right now, and that's our Arinda Disinfection Improvements Project. The board has heard a number of updates on that important project in the past. We have a UKPI now to finish design on this project in FY21, and we're on track to do that. I've listed some of the drivers and goals. One of the key benefits of doing this project will be to help us reduce the disinfection byproducts coming from Arinda to be more in line with what we see at the other plants. This is a project that's scheduled to start construction in about a year. Will take nearly five years to complete, so significant effort. You see here the use of new design tools we're using. This is a building information modeling 3D software. I think we've mentioned this in the past, very useful tool for us to be able to visualize what our facilities will look like before they're built, and really help at various stages of design to solicit input from operations and maintenance staff. You can see here a virtual rendering of the ultraviolet UV disinfection room, and again, a tool that we really rely on now for most of our designs. Next, in the next few slides, I just wanted to provide some highlights of our, what we call our bread and butter work. This is really keeping up with our aging distribution system, specifically our pumping plants and reservoirs. This slide summarizes a program to rehab our pumping plants. We've had this program in place since FY15 with a goal of rehabbing a KPI of rehabbing three pumping plants per year. Since inception of this program, we've either rehabilitated, replaced, or decommissioned a total of 21 pumping plants, so it's been very successful. The goal of this program is really to improve the safety and reliability of those distribution facilities by replacing aging mechanical and electrical equipment. I've highlighted here some of the projects we're currently working on, West Side Pumping Plan in Arinda, again, using BIM as a design tool. We're scheduled to start construction on that next year. We're working on the design for Madrona and Palisaco in Oakland, and we'll be working on the Ridgewood Pumping Plant Rehab in Alamo. Next, wanted to highlight also some efforts as part of our open cut program. This is an effort to really replace those large open cut reservoirs we have in our system that really pose some challenging water quality operations. We often have too much storage in the parts of our distribution system where these facilities are located. We're currently in progress under construction to replace a San Pablo Clearwell. You may recall taking a tour of this facility a couple of years ago, I believe, before we started construction. And so that project is underway. We're also in our CIP for the next five years, are planning on designing the replacement of the Leland Open Cut. And you can see here on the upper right-hand corner of the slide, a typical scope of work for these projects, which is to install concrete tanks that are partially buried, again, to address water quality challenges we have, where that Leland Reservoir is in Lafayette, and we're also plan on starting design for the replacement of Central Reservoir. You can see a neat picture here from the original construction of Central Reservoir, a very large open cut we have in Oakland. Next.
Can we go just a little bit faster? Sorry.
This is the last asset class reservoir rehab. We have over 130 reservoirs in our system. This focuses on the rehab of steel tanks, and I've highlighted here some projects we're currently working on. We've rehabbed 37 steel tanks to date. The goal here is really corrosion. Our coating systems only last about 25 years. We're currently under construction to replace a second tank at University in the Panoramic Neighborhood in Berkeley. We're scheduled to start construction on the rehab of the Castanada Tanks in San Ramon next year. And last, I wanted to mention we're also phasing out the last few redwood tanks we have as part of this program, and you see here Crest in Wallen Creek. And that really wraps up my highlights, and with that, I'll turn it over to Carlton, who's going to give you some highlights on pipeline, pipeline projects.
Good morning. Thanks, Serge. So I'll provide a quick update on the pipeline rebuild program and our large diameter pipeline replacement program. So real quickly, the five crews have been added since FY16, and our replacement rate has increased from 10 miles per year to now FY21 to 20 miles per year. Next. So you've seen this slide before. Really, the bottom line here is that in FY20, we had a goal of 17 and a half miles, and we hit that goal. FY21, our goal is 20 miles. FY 21, our goal is 20 miles and we're on track to hit that 20 miles. And in FY 2122, we're going to incrementally increase to 22 and a half miles per year. And we continue to take a measured approach to the replacement rate by tracking our main breaks versus pipe replacement and being flexible and adaptive to help our distribution system. Next. Oh, okay. So we should have noted that the district is also actively working on pressure management. So during the shelter in place order that began in March of this year, the district's distribution system experienced fewer main breaks than normal. And in April, the district broke a new record for the fewest main breaks that month. And our main breaks have been creeping up since the shelter in place ended in August. The pandemic provided a unique view of a major and immediate shift in water use. And we're working with UC Davis to study what the variables are in, you know, why we saw such a, a large decrease in main breaks. We're working with UC Davis and, and certainly more to come. And when we get more information, we'll provide that information to, to the board. Next. So pipeline rebuild, again, just to, the, the goals of the pipeline rebuild program is to maximize resilience with every pipeline project that we do. But in doing so, we're also, we also want to build a resilient grid, which is a grid that will tolerate damage and still be mostly functional and to provide strategic hardening for every project that we do. Next. So creating a resilient grid starts with hardening our distribution system by replacing every pipe with pipes that are more reliable and designed to higher standards. Pictured here are three pipes that, two of which we are using and one we're considering. On the bottom right is US Pipe Turflex, which the district recently purchased and will start installing next year. It's zinc coated for corrosion protection and has an internal restraint, restraint that locks the pipe in place. On the bottom left is our IPVC pipe, which we've been putting quite a bit of IPVC pipe in our system. It is substantially stronger than the PVC pipe than our conventional PVC pipe. And lastly, on the top right is a picture of an earthquake resistant ductile iron pipe. This one is US Pipe. It is a brand of pipe that can sustain large levels of defamation through axial displacement and rotation. And we're actively looking to purchase a type of earthquake resistant ductile iron pipe in the near future. All right, next. So I talked a little bit about resilience and I just want to highlight a couple of projects. Creating resilient grid means strategically hardening parts of our distribution system with critical customers and facilities. The district is starting to study how to create a resilient grid district wide. But on a project by project level, we do consider resilience. And the two projects here are the 52nd and Dover Cluster, which supplies the Oakland Children's Hospital, one of only five level one pediatric, pediatric trauma centers in California and provides the highest level of surgical care to trauma patients. And the system is now more reliable since we replaced the eight inch AC pipe with eight inch steel pipe. And pictured on the left is the May Reservoir in the Oakland Hills, which was identified as a critical facility because the reservoir provides the hydraulic gradients to support fire flows. And the, the pipeline, the transmission pipeline was both hardened and increased in size from 12 inch to 16 inch.
Hey, Jimmy and Carlton? Yeah. Maybe we can cover the remaining slides and we can just jump to the conclusion. We do have a fairly lengthy closed session and we can cover the remaining slides at the budget workshop in January. So Jimmy, maybe you can just jump to the last slide if that's okay with the board.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So I, I'll just skip through these quickly. We do have a timeline of all our projects that we are using to guide and show graphically. So this is the one for our roots, kind of like our KPI projects, facilities that we have a number of them of. And you can see here those, those reflected. We also have the second slide that shows the timeline of our major water cap, capital projects. And there is a sequence to these that I won't go through right now in the interest of time. But finally, in, in conclusion, the infrastructure needs that we have on the, for the water system have been identified in a number of previous master plans and they have been sequenced in the FY 20 to 24 CIP. We are currently working on an update for the next CIP. And that will be informed by data collected and the pilots that we've been working on that will inform the FY 2223 budget. And we expect to present a number of those to you at the budget workshops in January. So that, that concludes our presentation and we'll take any questions, although I know we are, we're out of time.
Thank you for making it brief. And we look forward to hearing more at the budget workshop in January. Are there any public comments? Risha?
President Young, I don't see anyone for a public comment.
Okay. Then with that, we will adjourn this workshop and board members will, we will reconvene by teams. So Clifford, you will send us, no?
No, you have to do a public comment for closed session first.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have closed session, public comment. I completely forgot about that. Okay. Which we do on a different Zoom or we can stay on this one?
No, we need to go into a different meeting because it has a different access code for participants.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
All right. See you on Zoom in a minute, guys.